Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready, begin.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every right and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to our next item. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Mayor, I would like to change number 5.6 from the consent calendar and move it to discussion.
Any other changes?
I have none.
We have a motion to approve.
I'll approve it with this change.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Hitchcock?
Aye.
Councilman Vosberg?
Aye.
Councilman Schindler?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Ramirez?
Aye.
Mayor Horn?
I vote aye. Okay, we move on to number two, awards, presentations, appointments or proclamations. We have none tonight. Number three, citizens' comments. This section of the agenda allows members of the public to address the city council on any item within the jurisdiction of the council. Members of the public, when recognized by the mayor, should come forward to the lectern, identify themselves, and use the microphone. Comments are normally limited to three minutes. In accordance with state open meeting laws, no action will be taken tonight, or taken by the city council this evening, and all items will refer to staff for follow-up and report. Citizens' comments submitted in writing to the city clerk by 5:00 p.m. on the day of the city council meeting shall be distributed to the city council and included in record. However, they will not be read. We have any citizens?
Good evening. I have to say I'm Hilda Crawford. And I just want to say that I'm really thankful for Marissa and the staff and the crew who put the Christmas donations or took the donations, gift wrapped, did everything for the kids during Christmas. I mean, I got a little tour of it, and I couldn't believe it was like going into Santa's workshop. I mean, there were so much gifts that were in there. And I know I probably started, sounded like a negative Nancy, thinking, I hope these people appreciate what they're getting. And then I felt bad after saying that, you know, because growing up in Huron, we got to go to the theater and came home with a bag of stocking full of the hard candy, the nuts, and the fruits. So we didn't, I don't remember going anywhere and getting those types of gifts. So I hope the families that put their names in really appreciate the fact that the city worked really hard to put everybody together to get, organize it, and get those gifts out to those kids. And I hope they had a nice Christmas. So thank you, Marissa, and whomever else helped out. All the people that donated, all the staff, the volunteers that wrapped the gifts, all the staff that put in their time to help out. But it was, it was like Santa's workshop in there. I didn't see any little elves, but I mean, it was in there and it was nice to see all those gifts. So I hope you get, receive thank you notes from, to Santa, to the city, to their little elves, the hard-working elves. That's all I needed, just wanted to say tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more comments? Mary?
Mary Jones, I just want to add an exclamation point to Hilda's comment. I brought my grandchildren down for the, I don't know what that part was called. They brought gifts, they brought toys in and exchanged them for another toy. So they got to participate in a loose way with giving to someone else and getting from someone else at their age of three through seven. And it really made an impact on them. I think our community does stuff like this that really should be highlighted and appreciated, not just by those who receive, but by those who give. It was so fun to watch my grandchildren be so excited about getting to give something for Santa's sleigh. It was just fun. So I appreciate all of that effort from the fire department, the police, whoever else was involved. I know it took a lot of people, a lot of coordination and patience, but it just, it was a fun event. And it makes such an impact that throughout the years, since they did it last year, they would ask when that was, if that was going to happen again and when. So it was really fun and I appreciate it. Kalanga does a lot of things for its community that other places don't do. And too often is unappreciated. I saw the picnic chairs set out by the Sunset and Fifth, where those three tables are set out. And I just thought, what a nice effort. When those kids come back to school, they can, you know, hang out there and relax during lunch without being on school grounds. And, you know, just have fun. So I like that and I appreciate it, and I want you guys to know that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Anyone else? Okay. Councilman Ramirez?
Hello, everybody. I just want to take this opportunity to get a moment of silence for everybody. So for the young fellow that passed away in the last December, I want us to bow our heads. This young fellow, everybody knew him and he was a great, he was a great soul. I coached him as a young kid in soccer. Dominic, Mr. Dominic Hernandez. And I want us to bow our head for a moment to pray for his family and all his friends and anybody who's been impacted by this tragedy.
Thank you very much.
Counsel? No? Okay. Go ahead and move on to, we'll go ahead and close. Open up number four, public hearings. We have none. Consent calendar, we have ten items, since we're moving one to discussion. Counsel? What would counsel like to do?
I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second.
I move to approve the consent calendar.
And I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Vosberg?
Aye.
Councilman Schindler?
Aye.
Councilman Hitchcock?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Ramirez?
Aye.
Mayor Horn?
I vote aye. Okay. So we're going to...
Yours, the item that you submitted a comment on was moved to discussion.
Oh.
There's nothing to hear. It's just directing me to contact him to ask for an update.
Okay, we'll go ahead and, since we moved item 5.6 to 6.2, we'll go ahead and read that one first for under ordinance, presentation, discussion, potential action items. Councilman Vosberg.
This is 5.6?
Yes.
Okay. So I just wanted to fully understand item 5.6 and the grant and the spending and basically just get a better overview of it, if the chief could give us some information.
Real quick before he speaks, just so you know, this item on here, it's for approving the 2023 to 2027 BSCC organized retail theft spending plan. That's what we're trying to get some information on.
Correct. And again, council has already approved what the, on the last staff meeting. This is just to, and this is also the grant that's been approved by BSCC. The original budget of 1.74 million, which went to council to approve with an adoption of resolution and the agreement from BSCC or ORT. But in the budget, I put down the high, the information as to what the salaries of the officers are going to be hired, two officers, the outreach and what that was going to cost, along with the evaluation plan that's required and the video cameras. So I just gave the information as to the account of the 1.74 million. And so I'm just asking council to approve this spending plan, which has been approved already by the state of California, the BSCC.
So my question is, and I, it's always amazing when we get these grants. You know, it's a lot of money. I'm actually surprised that we qualified for this grant. I just had a couple of questions. So the officers that are going to be hired for this, this is specifically towards retail theft. What will the officers that are hired by this be doing?
Well, these are going to be new officers that are hired. It'll be seasoned or veteran officers who actually be performing the job of organized retail theft because you need experience, investigations, that will be working thefts, cases, investigating that. Along with, part of the grant has a community component of contacting the businesses, trying to get them to harden their targets, their locations to prevent further thefts, along with building a coalition among the businesses. So there's the position that calls for a lot of responsibilities on the part of the officers.
So the new officers that we hire, they're going to be the ones doing this, or they're going to be doing something else?
No, the new officers, well, the new officers that are going to be hired are going to be new officers. They're going to go through the training program. But I have to assign, to the officers, two of my veteran officers are going to have to be assigned to that program.
Okay, so I know this is, you guys probably know a lot more than this about than I do, but just curious. Like with the rampant theft that we have, that is nothing more than them getting a ticket and getting released, what does this program do to try and stop retail theft? Because what we have happening right now is people thieving, getting a ticket, getting released, not even going to Fresno, and then doing it again. So how does this stop that?
Well, it's, how is it going to stop it? We do, at times, depends on the theft and the individual has a lot of warrants. They do sometimes go to the Fresno County Jail and they're not cited.
But like for retail theft, because that's what this is for, right?
Yes, it's a nonviolent crime and we can't control the jail or what occurs over there. But we have to continue enforcing the laws. And these investigators are going to assist in working with the businesses and trying to reduce the theft that's occurring on their businesses. And so it's a big plus for the city to have this. It also allows to add additional officers, which is, the city needs to help us provide a better service and quicker service. So the additional officers would do that. And as the city grows, you know, we should be at 2.2 officers per thousand. We're not there. So that's kind of been my goal. So having additional two officers for, that's great. It's going to assist the city in improving the quality of life here.
So that actually leads into my issue. My issue is that this, at the current budget point, we can't afford another two officers. And we can't afford everything that goes along with them. And so, or else we would have done it the last budget. And so this grant program lasts for three years, and what's going to happen after this grant money goes away? Because we can't afford it right now to have those two officers. Our budget was very slim. And we still have lots of needs and wishes on the wish list for other departments and other things. And I just, I mean, we always want to have more stuff, but it's always all based on what we can afford. And the other thing that we got to look towards is that Measure J will be expiring soon as well. And so, you know, even though this is a gift of, you know, a lot of money, I sit here to myself and look at, like, is this going to be something to where that when the grant comes, ends, that you're going to try and want to keep these two officers, even at the point that we may not be able to afford it? To keep balanced budget?
Well, I'm definitely going to try to keep the officers because it's what's needed in the city. It's your decision as to if we could do that or not. But if we send a message saying that this, at the end of the three years, these officers are gone, then the officers that we're going to be hiring are going to be looking for another agency since they'd be able to get a year or two experience, and they're gone, making it more challenging for us to hire. So I'm hoping we'll be able to get some support. I, we don't know what's going to happen in three years. A growth of the city, a better budget, a different council could continue these officers' positions. But we don't know. Three years is away.
Right, but we can project because we've seen the budgets in the past years. And we can see what happens when we over, when we staff more than we can afford. And we can see what happens when we get a council that is unwilling to make change. And we can go $4 million in the debt in the hole. And I watched that happen because of two councils that refused to make cuts when we needed to. So as I read this, I thought that this was being to be specifically for the grant and that the positions would expire with the grant, which I'm okay with. What I'm not okay with is tonight saying that we're going to provide two new officer positions, knowing that we can't afford it. And if you're saying that the, that the future is unknown, then I always err on the side of caution. And I don't go ahead and say let's spend without knowing. And I've asked before, not directly, but I've requested that we get five-year plan for this very thing. Five- and 10-year plan to think about, which I will be asking at some point in time for that. But this is one of those things. And I just, for me myself, I can't in good, I can't vote for something that is going to be looked at as, hey, we'll get this money for three years and then we won't have a plan after that. So if the plan is not that they will expire with the, with the grant, then I can't in good faith vote for that. Because, and I would encourage my colleagues to look at this as well and say to my, to say, how could we? Because we don't know where this is going to be. So we could be setting up another council for failure. Unless we can get something from the, from, that says, hey, these positions are going to expire unless something else changes. So unless we find a gift horse that has more money, or unless the grant continues, or unless something happens. But we, at the last budget, we had a wish list like this of things that the city needs. And we didn't get hardly any of them. And I know that the city itself inside needs more people too. And so I just think to myself that we need to be very cautious on spending. So that's why I moved this to discussion, because I kind of want to hear what the rest of the council has to think about this as well.
I got a quick question. I was reading through some of it. So we're getting rid of the four reserve positions to help cover the cost of the, if the new employees? Is that what it's for? that what it's for?
This, the position here pays for the salaries of the officers.
Right. Right, but for three years. Now, after that, with getting rid of the reserve positions, since we have the funding there for it, that's going to help cover the difference, right? We just won't have any, we just won't be able to get any reserves?
That's a separate agenda item?
That's what this one is, right?
What's, what's the outlook on the older officers that we have? Is there any coming up to retire in a couple of years, few years? I mean, what, what does that look like? And I know anything could happen at any time.
Correct. We do have one officer counting his days. I'm not sure how many days left to be retiring. So we do have one officer be leaving.
And I just want to clarify, just in case there's any confusion. So, when we post the jobs, the job announcements, it says grant funded through 2027. So they know that. We always put that on anything that's grant funded. So our intention as a city as a whole will be that today, the plan would be, if the grant funding ends, they would be laid off and those positions would be eliminated. Now, they may technically not be laid off because we may have other vacant officer positions that they could move into, but essentially those positions would go away. I think what Councilman Vosburgh's concern is, is that in 2027, there may be a completely different council here. And we may have a different perspective then. It could be that we have a windfall of money. It could be that our population doubles. It could be that we would be deficit spending and we have a council that supports deficit spending and they just want to keep them. And that's where his concern lies. And so that is a valid concern, but I can't predict what's going to happen in the future. I can only tell you what the plan would be today. So today, in that situation, if we had the grant and the grant funding ended, could we fund those two officer positions in the general fund with our current revenue? No, we cannot. In 2027, I don't know if we would be able to, but it would be up to the council then to decide if you want to keep those positions and fund them through the general fund, or eliminate those positions. And again, that's sort of the unknown and the concern is that it could be all of you still here today with the same mindset, or it could be a completely different group who's willing to deficit spend.
Well, I know we have a lot of young officers there on, and wasn't it the beginning of last year, we lost a young officer that transferred to Fresno because he wanted more action? So we don't know that the young ones we already have on aren't going to move on because they're looking for something better. So if the state's paying for it right now and it's labeled as to end in 2027, it could be worth our while to have the extra ones here, because there is people that leave for family reasons, or retirement, or whatever, and we already have them in place. And they know that that job could go away when they get hired. So it, it seems like a win.
So is there, is there a possibility that we can look at it in two and a half years before the three years is up, and kind of see where we're at? And if we need to change then, we can change then, or add to it, modify it in any way?
We could look at it as the time goes, a year from now, two years from now. But again, we currently have vacancies right now.
Yeah, okay. And the verbiage, the verbiage is for three years, correct?
It's a grant for 2027.
Okay.
So, I agree with Councilman Hetchcock on this, on what your point is on that. But I've also been through the times to where I have an entire council except for me who wants to deficit spend. And so, and then we have departments that were completely fine with deficit spending too. And I was just baffled about that, about how could we put our citizens in debt? Businesses don't want to come here. And relating back to that other item where we're getting rid of reserve positions in order to fund a full-time position, this is what is known as the back and forth. And this has happened so many times on this council, to where it's, okay, we're going to fund reserves so that we can have, lessen the overtime, and then, hold on, let's take away the reserves and let's get another officer. And this goes back and forth, and it's not just with one place, it's with a lot of different ones. And it always ends up like this. And what it ends up is, is the budget's growing. And if you look at the budgets for these departments, they've grown exponentially because of this type of tactic. And to me, my thing is, is that as a council, our goal is to protect the city as a whole, every single department we have financially, and then also public safety wise with the citizens. So we have to look at this and say, hey, you know, what's the best bang for the buck? And I just don't want to be stuck, you know, years, in 2027, I mean, I may not be here, but someone is, and you're going to have police unions, and you're going to have fire unions that are saying, we're, we're trying to cut public safety, at a time that we're trying to pass Measure J to get it to go. So then effectively adding two more officers to the scenario, that without, like, if it came to us today and we said, hey, we're going to add two more officers, we'd say no, because we can't afford it. But we won't get that decision when it comes down to it again. What it's going to be is, oh, you're cutting public safety, you're getting, you're taking away two officers. This is our time to make this decision, or to make language built in that this stays the way it is unless we, unless it's approved down the line. Because this is the time right now, because we're not going to get a chance again, unless it's going to be under duress of the council, because no one wants to lose positions. And I completely understand that. And I'm not saying the city doesn't need those positions. What I'm saying is, is that what we need and what we can afford are two different things. And yes, this grant is a godsend. Hey, we're going to get this for three years. But I just want to put this information out so that, hey, in three years from now, when it comes back, and I'm hearing the chief say one thing, and I'm hearing the city manager say something completely different. Like, we're on two separate pages of where this goes. You know, city manager's saying, hey, this is set to where, hey, it expires, and the police chief is saying, hey, no, we're going to add these to our, to our list of officers and up our scale to 22 or whatever, or however many it is. And so, I see that we're not even on the same page right now.
I think we're on the same page. We just look at it from different perspectives, because he's always going to want more officers. We could never have enough. He's always going to want more officers. Every department's always going to want more staff. But I cannot recommend deficit spending to you. I, I wouldn't. Even three years from now, I wouldn't. So is there a, a hope that we could keep them? Yeah. But when it comes down to it, and again, maybe council doesn't care what my recommendation is. But in 2027, even if I'm saying, no, we can't afford it, we need to lay off these positions, council can say, no, we're going to keep them anyway. But I would not recommend keeping them if we can't afford them. Do we want them? Yes. And would the plan be to find a way to keep them if we have the money to do that? Yeah. I mean, we never want to lay anybody off. But if we don't have the money to do it, I can tell you right now that I wouldn't recommend keeping them because we couldn't afford to.
So I actually like Merritt Horn's idea of bringing this back and taking another look at it. And maybe if we could bring it back in two years, instead of two and a half, that gives us a little bit more leadway. That way we can see where the budget is. Because if, if there's any way we can afford to give you more officers, we want to. I mean, I'm going to go on a limb and speak for the whole council here. We want to do that. But my personal self, I just have to make sure that we're like, okay with the budget in doing so. And so I know that there's also the idea to where, like, if you had people leave, and we don't have the budget for it, that you could push these people into those positions. And I guess if maybe we had a year's window, maybe that'd give more time to be able to do that, so that we wouldn't be cutting people. Because it's hard. It's horrible to be up here and say, hey, we have to cut positions. And then you have to watch, you know, people that are connected with the police and connected with the citizens lose their job. And I guess maybe I'm just a little bit more passionate and more cautious, because I've had to sit up here and do that. And it was horrible. So.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, I see both, both parties, and it's like a tug of war. It's a great idea, but at the same time, it's a scary idea, because I don't want to see no officers go. I really like the, the road that we're going with, public, public safety. But also, my mind turns, because when we were out in the retail convention in Long Beach, I stood up in front of the DA of Los Angeles, and I asked her what's going on with this retail stuff. She told me there's groups from Arizona, Nevada, and one little one from Oregon coming into California and doing this, because they know they're not going to get away, they're going to get away for everything. And there's little towns that are losing their businesses. There are, you know, basically on the move to expand. And I hope that we could do something about this, so we could get this going, because when I sat there and the LDA responded to me as, well, we can only do whatever we do, and that's a big city. I stood up there and said, well, this is why we have to keep our prisons even more open and more, and build more prisons. But it also eyed opened me, because I said, well, there's a point where we could stop this. And I think that's one way to do it. And I hope that we can resolve this, but I agree that we should sit down and talk about it a little bit more.
Can I just get some clarification from Councilmember Vosburgh? So currently, so you don't want to accept the 1.74 million, is that what it was?
No, no, that's, hold on, no, no. Absolutely want to accept the 1.7 million. That's a godsend, and I appreciate everyone who worked long efforts to get that. That would be foolish. No, what I want to do is just make sure that in the years to come, that we're aware of the budget, and that council doesn't get put in between the police department and the council, if we have to say, hey, we have to make decisions to, because it's a grant-funded positions, you know, we love the police department. We don't want to be on the back end of them, of the police saying, hey, council's trying to get rid of public safety. No, we're not. We just can't, if we can't afford it, we can't afford it. So if this comes in and we can get this, yes, heck, absolutely do it. But just know, like, three years from now, when this comes in, if we can't afford it, you know, hopefully people will make good decisions, and hopefully you as chief, as part of this city, will also help us make good decisions in, in being within a balanced budget.
So is that the consensus of council is to approve it, bring it back in two years, see where we're at, and see if we can go any further after the third year?
Before someone makes a motion, we have a public comment.
Mary.
Part of my concern was already addressed by Councilman Vosburgh. It's just like when you're getting married and someone suggests a prenup, and people get offended, well, I would never, I would never be unfair to you. I would never ask you of that. But as a resident who's been here for 47 years, I can tell you all sorts of things do happen. And I know we're great allies, mostly with Marissa, but Marissa might decide to move to, you know, Beijing tomorrow. Probably not. But you never know. So I think it would be foolhardy to ignore any little niggling's and not put in writing some sort of caveat, some sort of very clear understanding that these positions are funded through the grant and will expire, so that even a junior high school student could read it and understand it. So nobody can say how unfair you were, and you don't care. You're, you're just covering your own selves by, by doing that ahead of time, before everybody gets emotional. The other thing I had that I, I was, this is just retail theft, correct? So like, if somebody goes out and steals from a farm, or steals tractors, or whatever else, that's, that's not covered?
It's the thefts in the city of Kalinka.
Okay. So, I think we're lucky, because we don't live in a metropolitan area, but it's kind of a joke right now about stealing. It's always been an adolescent thing for kids to go in and take a candy bar or whatever. But there has to be something as a community that we could do to educate and create some moral fiber that seems to be lacking, because so many people say, it's just a candy bar, or it's just this, or it wasn't even worth mentioning. Like the people I knew who were so happy that their son got busted for a beer party that he was having at his house at the ripe age of 15, they said, well, at least it wasn't drugs. And there were over 30 people there plastered. Not recently, don't worry. But it's, it's an attitude that's prevalent in our community. We feel very insulated against the evils of the world. And they start with just that little, take a candy bar thing. And I just would like to see us collectively as a community come up with some sort of building community awareness and support. Because when that business in San Francisco, how many targets closed up in the Bay Area? I think five.
Mary, I'm sorry your time is up.
Okay, sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
So, so, Hilda has a question, but she didn't fill out a comment card, so it's up to you if you want to let her get up and talk.
You rather want to come up?
I just have a question. What is our theft ratio in town?
Well, we're just ending the year. I don't have the total stats right now for the end of the year. But petty theft and thefts from the city is, have increased, or, but I won't know the exact numbers until the December stats come in.
So what is the highest theft rate? Car?
No, petty, thefts from stores are the highest.
Okay, they're the highest. So that's why you do the retail then?
Correct.
So it would specifically be just retail?
Well, I did the grant also because the funding was for the technology too. So it allowed us to be able to get additional technology into our city.
Okay, does it, so, it probably doesn't include home burglaries? Is it specifically retail and that's it? It doesn't include, like, you know, if somebody steals your car, if somebody breaks into your home?
It's auto theft, it's, it's all thefts. Burglaries, registered burglaries, burglaries from vehicles, it's all thefts in the city.
Okay. And these officers would be the ones that would be your Columbos and investigated, correct?
Correct.
Okay. All righty, thank you.
So if I-
Thank you for letting me speak.
If I can, Mayor, I just wanted to address some of Mary's questions. So, the two officers that are hired through the grant, the job announcement will say grant fund, this position's grant funded through, whatever the date is, in 2027. There will also be a form that they sign when they're hired acknowledging that. And then we have these forms that are called personnel action forms. So anytime that there's a change in your personnel status with the city, you have to sign this form, and it'll state that on there also. I think what you were more asking was for the council to have language that says these positions will be eliminated in 2027, which they could certainly do, it's just not enforceable, so it doesn't mean anything. So a council today can't bind a future council. So even if they said, we want these positions to automatically be eliminated in 2027, we could have someone sitting up here that requests a future agenda item that says we want to fund those through the general fund, and they have the ability to do that without...
So could they just put down that it will be addressed as a council?
They could, but it's not, it's not enforceable.
Okay, got it.
So, I think what we're going to do is, we are going to bring it back to discuss in two years. We can write that into this, that we're going to bring it back to discuss in two years. And I just want to make it clear that my goal and my position is not to pre-cut people. It's just to understand the budget that we have. And I was in a budget crisis where we had to go to, I think, what was it, 11 officers? Right. So this thing cut snowballs. And I've been there, and I don't want to be there again. So I just want to make sure that that, there's no goal to pre-cut officers. There's no goal to, like, hey, get some and then make sure that we can't get them back. It's just that if, if the budget doesn't, can't go for it, then we don't want to be the bad guys here. You know, if there's any way, shape or form we can make it happen, then we would, I think we would try and do that. Because everyone here wants public safety. But I just wanted to clarify that, that that, this isn't the goal. And my, any specific agenda of me specifically is, hey, we want to make everyone safe.
And in that two years, chief, you know, if, if we come back and talk about it, and there's somebody fixing to retire at the end of the next year, you'll have more information then, to where we don't have to let people go. You know, we're, we have a plan moving forward, and we're just wanting to get ahead of that, so we don't have to do layoffs and we don't have to break the budget. So we, we want to keep the people, but we want to make sure everything's in line. So if we stay on top of it, I think that's what Nathan's getting at. And it, it would work good for the city. getting at. And it, it would work good for the city.
Okay, what would council like to do on this item?
I make the motion that we approve the item, and that we add in that we're gonna bring it back in two years to discuss how to continue, how to continue to fund the program, if possible.
I'll second that. Roll call, please.
Councilman Vosberg?
Aye.
Mayor Horn?
Aye.
Councilman Hedgecock?
Aye.
Councilman Schindler?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Ramirez?
Aye.
Okay, we'll move back to item 6.1, discussion direction of potential action related to peddler's regulations. Marissa?
Thank you. It does have Sean's name on here, but he's not here today, so I'll go ahead and address this item. So this was requested as a future agenda item by Councilman Vosberg, and I just wanted to give an overview of what's currently in that section. So currently, if anyone wants to go door-to-door to sell any item or to provide information that could lead to a sale in the future, anytime there's a potential for money to be exchanged, they're required to get a peddler's permit from the police department. I think the fee is 125, but I may have the fee wrong. But that fee covers a background check for that person before they're issued the peddler's permit. And so we've talked about who's required to have a peddler's permit, who's not required to have a peddler's permit. And so one example I'll give you is, like, Hilda's here tonight, and she does a lot for the library. So if she wanted to go door-to-door to hand out information about a free event going on at the library, she would not need a peddler's permit because there's no potential for money to be exchanged. She's not soliciting business at the time that she's going to, to the door or in the future. But if someone is doing solar or vacuums, those cut co knives, advertising real estate, anything like that, currently, they would need a peddler's permit. So I did talk about this item with Councilman Vosberg to understand his intent with bringing this item forward. And I think that we've come up with a potential solution that could benefit the community. And if we changed the language, which it wouldn't take effect today because it's an ordinance change, so it'd have to come back to you. But if we allowed people to place items outdoors, like flyers or anything, even if it was advertising something that could result in a monetary exchange in the future, as long as they're not making contact with the homeowner, that would be a reasonable compromise to be able to allow our businesses to go out and advertise their business, but they're not making contact with whoever lives in the home, or they're not intentionally making contact. There may be an example where someone comes out because they see someone on their porch, but they're not ringing their doorbell or knocking to solicit business from them. They're just leaving information that may be a reasonable compromise. So technically, they wouldn't get in trouble, but are they supposed to do that? No. And anyone you invite to your home, this doesn't apply to. So if, sorry. So if you had, you wanted Tupperware or something, and you knew someone who sold it, and you invited them to your house to bring their Tupperware, they wouldn't need a peddler's permit. And the exemption is $50. So if it's going to be an exchange less than $50, like a kid wants to rake your leaves for 20 bucks, that would be fine. So if it's less than $50.
So I brought this up at the request of a third party, a local business owner, that was just simply getting out the word, getting out flyers for their business, and was told that because of the current ordinance, that they weren't supposed to do that. And so I've been speaking with the city back and forth to try and find a solution to be able to keep the residents safe. So when you have people coming up to your house, starting to sell you solar, trying to sell you alarm systems, that can be kind of, you know, people don't know who these folks are. We want them vetted. But when someone's just leaving a leaflet and walking away, you know, the only difference here is whether you're not, you're making a little bit of money. You know, so I just figured, like, that, hey, if, talking with the city manager, if we could just get rid of that one portion, that it wouldn't really have a huge effect on anyone except for allowing the businesses to go and place that flyer down. So that was my goal and intent, to make it easier for the businesses and not really affect public safety.
I talked to one of the old city council people that told me the original one, the intent was to keep the people from knocking on your door late at night. It wasn't flyers when they put that peddler's license in. So that seems to go in conjunction with what they had originally wanted. But I don't want people knocking on my door at 9 o'clock at night either. So I get this was a good, this was a good ordinance to put in. It just needs to be tweaked a little bit to, to work. I have a concern with the stuff on the porch, and maybe we can add it to the app. Because we got one left on our porch one time here recently, and it was a QR code. It was a card with a QR code on it, which is super sketchy. You're linking your phone to it. So maybe with this, we can add something to our app that if there's something that's strange like that that gets left on your porch, we can tag it on our city website and alert other residents that somebody's going around. And I don't know if it's a scam or not. I wasn't gonna QR code it to see what it was because that's, to me, pretty sketchy. It's like getting a text message that says, tap here. You know, you don't know who it is. You don't know what it is. So maybe that's something we can help protect our, our residents. But, you know, the real estate people leaving stuff and our local businesses, that, that doesn't, that doesn't necessarily hurt us as a community.
So what I'm understanding, the kids, the kids can go to, to the doors to sell, like, can the kids, like, the ones that sell chocolates for, like, the Oilers or anything?
Yes, as long as it's under $50.
Okay. Is there a way that we could put some language in there where we could tell the organizations, okay, here's a paper, stopped by the police, police station, they show their paper, and that's fine?
I believe that's what they have. They have to notify, depending on what the sales...
Depending on what the sales are, they have to notify the police department anyways. They're supposed to. Not all of them do, which is the ones that they get complaints on because they look like stalkers driving in black vans that nobody knows.
Yeah, because the cheerleaders, I know their fundraiser's over $1,000.
But we're talking about per, per, per sale at each door.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so they're exempt, as it sits.
There's, okay.
They're good.
They can ask for a dollar.
They're good.
If you want to get more, it's a donation.
Yeah, because their donation, the way it works is like, if they, somebody wants to buy the jacket for $50, the other one buys it for another 50, the other one buys it for 100. So it's per. Right?
Mary? Yeah, if, if you can come up to the podium.
So with the capabilities we have now, how difficult or would it be possible to, when somebody applies for a peddler's license and they get one from the city, could you put it on a thing that you could readily check on your phone to see whether they have one? Just not necessarily with a photo or anything, but just a way that you could verify that? And I used to feel like Wonder Woman. I felt like I could take on any challenge, but I'm not that way anymore. And people come to my door all the time. I don't know whether it's a new neighbor that's looking for help, or someone looking for a dog, or someone that tells me my windows need to be replaced. So, or someone that, you know, with bad ideas. But it would be reassuring if you could just, you know, check on your phone, just put that, we've got a lot of platform through the city for a lot of space there. It seems like it would be something that could be included for us. And also, do, are people, once they have a license, are they supposed to carry it and show people? Should it be on display? Like, is it required that they display that?
I believe most of them have, they have a lanyard, or they have a clip that's attached to their waist. So that way, they have their credentials with them.
And do we know what that looks like? Could, I'd like you to send me, well, that's a bad thing, good thing. So bad people could counterfeit it, but good people would know what to look for.
So I will tell you that the intent was, we have, so we have zero people with a peddler's license right now.
Ah, okay.
So that makes it easy. Nobody has one. But the intent was, they are issued an ID. They are required to wear it and display it. And then there was going to be a section on the police department's website with who currently has one and their picture. So you'd be able to go on their website and say, Mary Jones has a peddler's permit. Here's her picture. That's who's at my door.
I'm gonna sell guitar strings, just so you know.
So that was kind of the intent of this, was to kind of like, push just the peddlers, which would be someone who's actually going to the door to actually sell something at that moment into just this category, and somebody who's leaving leaflets and flyers into a separate category isn't just, that way that, we wouldn't have them both in the same thing. And I think removing that little bit of language would accomplish that. I'm gonna wait for the rest of the council to just, if they're, if they're open on it. Yeah, my, that is, I'd like to make a motion...
I'll second that. Roll call, please.
Councilman Vosberg?
Aye.
Mayor Horn?
Aye.
Councilman Hedgecock?
Aye.
Councilman Schindler?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Ramirez?
Aye.
Okay, next, we're gonna move on to announcements, city manager's announcements.
I have none.
Councilmembers?
I have one on behalf of the chamber. Scott couldn't be here tonight. So he wanted me to make sure everyone knew that on Saturday, February 3, the 114th Annual Gala and Community Service Awards banquet, and that there are tickets still available. So if anyone's, wants to attend and bring your significant others, get ahold of Scott at the chamber and purchase your tickets. And that's all I have.
Any other announcements, council?
Happy New Year.
I have one, just to kind of go over what Hilda was talking about earlier with the Christmas program and stuff. I actually got the, I actually got the chance to be Santa Claus this year and help hand out a lot of the gifts around town. And I'm telling you, I was, I was gonna take my beard off, but I think I'm gonna keep it for a while. Just to see that many smiles, it, it was, it was worth every bit, every bit of it. I've been growing it out for a year, just for this moment. And I think I gotta keep it for a while. Oh, yeah. I only had one kid that was scared, and she was a little three-year-old girl. And soon as I got done talking to her, she had me hold up her pictures with the smile on her face from ear to ear. So it was worth it. Oh, yeah. It was, it was worth every bit of it. Okay, number eight, future agenda items.
I got, I got one or two, I think. One, I want to see if I could get a stop sign on Glen and Second.
At the three-way?
Well, it's, no, well, yeah, it's basically a three-way. Yeah, I want the stop sign, see if they could go from north to south and leave Second as an open. Yeah, because there's already been, there's already been, today there was an accident again. And just last week, there was an accident there. So I don't want a yield sign. I want a stop sign there. Make sure that, because when you go to the dip, you can't, you can't see anything, and people are just going through there. And another one, if we could get ahold of, over there where the bridges, that where the, there's a, there's a, the, the sign, there's a couple of tree stumps. See if we could get somebody to grind them down. I know it's Frontal County property or something, but just the other day, a dirt bike wrecked right on the, on one of the streets, tree stump. Luckily, it didn't get hurt, but they, they hit that. I know you can't see them. Thank you.
And I have none as well. Okay, we'll move, we've got, move on to item number nine, closed session. We have three items for closed session. With that being said, we are going to adjourn this meeting until January 18.